In order. Pledge allegiance.
Jamie coming to you or they on the call?
There's trucks over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, free of any injustice for all.
We're really patriotic tonight, we sell their toys.
Roll call please.
Jamie Kendall, absent, Darcy McSwain.
Present.
Paul Jenderski.
Present.
Edgar Tidoff.
Present.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
And Kathy Harris.
Present.
Under three budget discussion.
Uh, so this is something Matt Lane started, we continue to do it, we couldn't do it last meeting, but I think it's nice to just get away from everybody and just talk about it, what you wanna see, what what you think the numbers are. Um, we do need to set the truth in taxation tonight, so that gives us, you're supposed to have at least six days and it has to be in the local papers, so that'll give us plenty of time. Um, but then other than that, uh, obviously the state just came out with their budget recommendations, this is a tough part of being a ma- uh, March thirty first, April one budget, it's like one of those, why can't we all just start on January one? So the state's September thirtieth, October first, so they're coming out with their numbers for October, we're coming out our numbers for April. So just like that millage, you know, we won't know till August.
Right.
So we can bump up two mills, we can bump up one, we can cut back two, hoping they're thinking it's gonna go through, I don't think it passes here. But I just really don't know.
That's the whole problem, just like with the, here's a good one. The city general Dow event center, nobody out here in the rural areas wanted anything to do with that, it's like no, it's a, it's a business of its own, if it can't stand on its own two feet, then let it go. People in Saginaw outvoted us and it's still standing, it's like really?
That's my fear, what's gonna happen is gonna be the city and then another town, couple townships who see the benefit and outvote us.
What scares me most of the time when they ask for money for, let's say, the roads and you shoot it down, they're like, wait, fixing nothing, and then you're really taking them.
Yeah.
For it.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they're collect, are they collecting interest off that when they pool it all together?
I don't know that, I imagine.
That's why I'm thinking they kind of, I felt like, like you said, they're pandering kind of to, I think they, I mean, I'm, I was going by what my old man said, cause my old man was part of the road commission, he was a greater operator for thirty-two years, he knew the guy who came here, he says he's an asshole, he's, you know, he says, they're just pandering for money, they, because they make interest off that when they collect it.
And I can honestly see, back there's nothing in the statute, and they can say that it has to come here, but then why, why are you making agreements with the township saying it has to go there?
Right.
If the statute says so, which tells me the statute doesn't say so, I've passed millages or failed millages in the past. And a lot of times, they do that because they can pay off their pensions, but obviously you don't really need now because the state just don't, or gave five hundred and thirty-three million dollars to municipalities throughout. But then they could put it towards their OPEB if they wanted, which is, if the state does that, we're going after those dollars, I'm not gonna be holding it even now, I'm gonna say, you gave everybody else money, you gave Chesapeake three million, you gave Richland three, four hundred thousand, let's get ours up to sixty percent then. So that's, that's my fear, I, so that's some, something to consider, that we have to make a decision next month based on what we think is gonna happen and.
Well, what do you think's gonna happen?
I think.
I think like, just like you said, I think people out here are gonna go, screw you, we just, you ran a fix the damn road, where'd all the money go? We ain't seen the roads fixed around here, they might be fixed around Lansing, Detroit, we're, they're not getting fixed here.
It's not gonna get passed here.
No.
But I think it gets passed in those four major townships.
City, uh, three hundred Tibwasi, they're gonna pass it.
I mean, don't think I don't want the roads fixed, it's not that, it's just like, you, I know, I know they even had like a four hundred and sixty-some million dollar surplus in Michigan this last year, where'd that money go?
Right, so we're getting a little bit uptick, you'll see in the numbers, but again, when I worked in the governor's office, we s- we worked on, we had a transportation message where we basically switching some funds and switching some amounts and the tax percentage of the six percent sales tax going to roads, they generated four billion dollars more for roads every year.
Why don't they split it up between all the counties and communities where they can get it done, where they, I mean, like, we can assess what damages are done here, turn it in. And it, it's split it up instead of letting them decide which roads need to be fixed.
Right, but they do the popular stuff that your people see.
Populated area.
Get you, popular, get you reelected, like.
Right.
The major road, you know, seventy-five as you come in from Ohio, like, that's always beat up, Ohio people always rip us for it, still kinda be, they're working on it, you know, seventy-five people going north, let's have a nice seventy-five and twenty-seven. Well, what about the roads going this way? Well, nobody really uses those, or we don't care, because they don't see it, so, um, I, I think we stick with our two, and if we, if it passes, uh, I don't know if we just send it back, I, I, I put in here the road millage that passed in sixteen for you to look at, it goes through twenty, thirty, five. So, that's gonna end in, you know, eleven years, it's two mills, that account, we, like I said, we spent, we sent two hundred and fifty thousand of that uh, on the category B, we sent a hundred and sixty-seven thousand of that the year before, so, I mean, the account has, what is it? Two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in it, so we could probably pick a couple roads and do a little bit, just a little bit every year, and keep doing what that intent is. But, if you wanna start it, uh.
Do like Main Street? Westlock Drive?
We could, I mean, that, that would make one, you know, group happy, it's not ideal, but that's something that maybe we look into.
I don't know.
I know Maple Street needs it pretty bad right now, but then again, we.
Walmart needs it.
If we get the, say, for us the school grants, we don't, you know, we'd be doing it twice in.
Right.
Yeah.
In two years, which, that's my fear.
That's smart thinking though. You know you're gonna do it another year?
Way down.
Put a new road in, then tear it up, we're doing it, it makes no sense.
So I have a quote for North and Main, and I don't have it yet, obviously, TJ Pries gotta get back to me, but the whole road isn't bad. It's ba- about halfway down, I could see that, but is that phase three, you know, is it okay to do now and, cause we're not gonna get to it till twenty thirty-five? Or twenty thirty-two, like, you know, this is where next year's capital improvement plan is so important. Like, it's, it's stressful because it's big numbers, but this is what happens and everything's been aging and we've kinda just gotten along. And we can get along and we gotta pick and choose what we wanna do, but if you wanna start out with just a draft budget, um, the property taxes, I, I only increased a little bit. Uh, we have seventy-five thousand dollars worth of people that haven't paid yet.
Really?
So that'll go to the county, they'll, they'll fix it and send us the money, but not till April, May, I think we get it in.
Oh, it's usually May.
Yeah, May.
That money, some of that you probably never gonna.
We, we collect it from their delinquent tax fund, so they have funds to give to us, so I only went up a little bit bas- based on our computer system and what's still outstanding. Uh, the personal profit tax replacement, uh, I lowered that because BSNA showing, we're not doing that, when that went into effect with Snyder and Cali, it was only for a sunset, I think, is so many years, and if people are, have less that they can claim, so that number is going down. So, building permits, that's Scott, obviously, um, you know, I got, why is, why is he asking for a building permit on a new roof? Well, because that's how we're sustaining that office, in the past, they did nothing and we were paying, you know, somebody to do a job for no- nothing, he literally come in, make a bagel, use the bathroom and leave. So now that we have somebody actually doing the job and some, I'm trying to get him off the city of Saginaw, more on a, you're on a village now, it doesn't have to always be by the book, look at the gray area, let's work with people, take them at their word.
Work with people, that's the key, that guy does not work with people, that's the problem.
And so, uh, you know, he's, he's bringing in more money than he has, but, uh, other further, uh, federal grants, nothing as of yet.
Yeah, what's up with that, I just see, how do you get ninety-nine, twenty-six to nothing?
So that was the second part of our ARPA funds, our American Rescue Plan Act.
But there's some kind of a rough idea though, I mean.
Well, so that was, that's gone, that's, those monies are already, we already used the two hundred and ninety-three thousand for, uh, the water system payment.
Nothing else was applied for?
Pardon?
Nothing else that we could?
No, we applied for everything we could, but that's on the state level, there's like a, a section that's like for police, it ends up being eight hundred and forty-nine dollars this year. And it, it goes to two percent of your local eligibility, and so next year it'll go all the way up to eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. Uh, so the police training revenue, same Metro Act, about same for the BSNA, and then the, like I said, the revenue sharing, the city, village, township revenue sharing is going up. I have forty-four, one fifty-nine, it's gonna go up to forty-four, five eighty-four. It was supposed to go up about two point four percent, um, ends up being between twenty-four and twenty-five, one point one percent, so next year I could even probably guess it's gonna be forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then the constitutional revenue sharing, which is, uh, nineteen sixty-three, article nine, section ten, which is, uh, fifteen percent of four percent of the six percent sales tax, uh, is gonna go up to two hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars instead of two eighteen, one eighty-eight. Uh, collection fees about the same, pavilion rental, it went down, uh, during COVID, we, we had a, people wanted to be outside and people really used them. Uh, last year, not many people, we do have a company coming out, we have, we're charging the little e- or the strikes on a hundred and fifty and kind of saying that those are used up for that weekend, so we do have some. About four or five rentals thus far, but it's not like we hope, but hopefully the playscape and family reunions boost. Uh, copy machine income is silly, ninety bucks, ninety bucks. Refuge collection, I do, I did throw the MMWA projections in there, uh, we're going up one forty-six, nine sixty-four, that covers all of our costs, uh, for, I don't know how long. Prior to me, but we did not raise the trash rates, so we were paying MMWA that, what is it? Ten thousand a month or fifteen thousand a month?
Twelve or whatever.
Yeah, and people weren't paying it, so we were eating a lot of money, and so now we're just kinda trying to make it revenue neutral. Uh, rather than that, and so if you wanna talk about what, uh, Mr. Westlock was talking about last month, uh, when he's talking about the water bill was split off on the taxes, it was actually the water bill, water, sewer and garbage was on there, so Chris Newman split the garbage off, put it on the taxes like all the MMWA communities do. So that's what, he was mistaken, he was corrected, he's good with it, but he did, he was, he was ninety-five percent sure he was right about something and he was close. Um, ordinance fines, five hundred dollars, I don't know, that doesn't bring in a lot for us, we normally spend more on lawyers fees than anything. Interest income, just going on BSNA, um, the rent sprint PCS, BSNA, ca- cable TV is like the Metro Act, or not Metro Act, but it's, we get money from.
What was the interest income backup a little bit?
Yep, so that's just interest on income that we have in our bank system, basically, so we are doing very well financially, um.
It's good that it goes up, but.
Yeah, so, uh, we have, this is the problem, you can only insure up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a bank federally.
Yeah, unless you go to another bank and another bank.
We have, we have fifteen banks. We have, between us, obviously it's on the record, but we have three point three million dollars. In reserves for emergencies, for, um, you know, we did all that work last year and we still have the same amount of money in the bank that we had when we started the project.
Good.
So we, I think we have about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in cash and two point eight million in CDs. And that's where, that's the income, in- interest income. And I, I don't like to sit on it, I'm not a hoarder, I know some managers like to sit on it and brag about how much money they've saved, well, we did stuff and we still saved, so I think that's more important, that people see that you're using their taxpayer's dollars, they don't wanna pay more when they don't, they're not getting the service. The Second Amendment Foundation Park Grant, that, we're not gonna get that again, uh, contribution, those are donations when people pass, I don't bank on those, I don't like to, I don't like to, hey, you know, I know there's people we've, who've reached out to us, when I go, I wanna donate to the park, and I'm like, yeah, well.
Okay.
Uh, I'll wait till it happens.
The mercy passed me, yeah, really waiting on her donation.
What do you mean, you're not gonna give us the money, I banked on it, I know. Uh, the farmer's market brings in very little, we spend more, I hate that we are, you know, the state requires us to do that, but it's a good thing for people to get fruits and vegetables, I just think it should be done in a different manner, nonprofit, five oh one C three would be perfect, but.
Well, let's hold that up.
The state. All right, it's all through them, you get the emails, you guys have got the emails, so. Transfer from Major is paying off the Fulton Hosmer project, um, I think it ended up being a hundred and ninety thousand dollar project, we replaced water mains and water lines over there, that was the start of kind of phase one, that's where we had three leaks in like, I don't know, three weeks. Guys are coming in at four AM trying to stop stuff, and we still have leaks over there, we know it. Um, the transfer from the DDA kinda pays a little bit for my salary and a little bit for us plowing sidewalks, since it's downtown development. Um, and plowing parking lots apparently. Miscellaneous is the five thousand dollar grant from the Consumers Foundation to plant trees, um, last year when we cut all those trees, you guys might remember on Facebook, people were in an uproar that we, you know, we're not environmentalists, we hate green energy, we hate everything, so we got the relief Michigan grant, replaced twenty of those, well, I applied for another grant to replace another twenty to forty, so that will place everything we took out, um, in better places, so they're not going into the wires and we don't have to, you know, trim and cut and things like that, and then the un, un designated fund balance is just protection, we have it in the bank, um.
How does it go from one ninety to one hundred?
Oh, I just, I took it down, we, we don't have as many projects going on, last year was for the park, the playscape, uh, it was for, what else did we do? There's a couple other big projects, paying off the, the dump, the loans, things like that, this year, cutting it back because we do have money in other funds, like water funds, sewer fund to pay for things, so this is just as like a precautionary cover us, uh, if we need it. So the general fund revenues ended up being one, one point two million, I'm trying to think of what last year's was, was at one point four, so we're going down. Uh, basically equivalent of almost the ARPA funds, really, um, federal funds gone, so. If you can go through the appropriations, obviously your wages, you get paid in April, I believe, right, first week of April, and then FICA to cover it, supplies. I try to budget a little bit, so if you guys wanna go to conferences and workshops, we have some money there, um, I also budget some into, um, the office, so that if you wanna, like, if you all wanna go to new council person training, you don't have to pay for it, obviously. If you wanna go to Grand Travers Resort and have us pay for four nights, we might have to talk. There's no per diem, there's no per diem, and don't bring your, your booze receipts, but. Uh, the, this does include a, a wage increase for everybody except for myself, as we negotiated contractually. Free, I went up three percent on salary, uh, I've got it budgeted out, two percent, three percent, four percent, so with Tito leaving, his fifty, fifty-five thousand dollar year salary and his benefits, which are because of his age, because of how long he's been here, because of his family, we are gonna save over forty thousand dollars a year, just in that, just from one person. So, and we, we've shut down all the other healthcare stuff for the long term, we've shut, shut down the pensions, that are two point five multipliers, the, the two point oh multiplier, so we've made all the changes so that we're really paying retirees and beneficiaries way more than we are current employees.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, so, uh, Tito, Marguerite and Jason Thurston are the last three in the, in the good pension and the good retiree benefits. Everybody else, we cost probably a third of what the retirees in those three, uh, a month. But, I mean, you get in when you get in, the timing was right.
Yeah, it's a good bad thing, you, you, it's good that they got in when they did, but I mean, sign of the times, it's what everybody's doing, so I mean, what do you do?
Yeah.
Work till you're dead.
Right. So we're in a good spot, I mean, like I said, we're seventy-five percent funded, OPEB twenty-nine, uh, we went from owing one point six million in OPEB to now we're down to nine hundred and fifty-nine. And like I said, a lot, some of those are dying off, and every time they pass away or they're beneficiaries, the number goes down, so. Some of them have been on our retirement for twenty-five years, like, when pensions and OPEB came out, it wasn't, you weren't, you're gonna die at seventy-five when you were supposed to, not eighty-five, ninety, ninety-five, and then some of them, some of them is the beneficiary, so their wives that lived an extra ten years past them, but again, it was a benefit, uh, so, the wages, uh, are not changed for me, uh, they are changed for Marguerite, uh, Lou, all the police, DPW, like I said, though, we're, by losing Tito on Friday, we're, we, we called, uh, health companies, said, Friday, five o'clock, chat him. Chat him, like, nope, he'll get it when he gets it, we'll pay out what we owe, but that should be, again, huge cost savings. Uh, again, so you look at, look at clerk, for instance, and pension plan expenditures, that's Lou's pension plan, thirty-five hundred dollars. And you look at treasurer, and it's thirty-eight thousand dollars, and that's the difference of fourteen years ago benefits and now benefits, so.
What page is that on?
That's, uh, two.
Page number two.
That thirty-eight thousand.
So.
On the very bottom.
Office.
Treasurer.
Clerk and the treasurer.
So, Marguerite does a fantastic job and she doesn't make a ton of money, but she's here for the benefits. So, we, we have made the tough decisions that a lot of municipalities put off that cost them their pride in taking a government handout, in my opinion, but don't get me wrong, if OPEB comes, I'm, I'm. Uh, repairs and maintenance, utilities for the village hall and grounds, uh, no, no new kitchen. I know we joked about that, my, the previous manager wanted twenty-five thousand dollars to redo the kitchen here. I liked food, but not that much.
Over in the countertops?
Yeah, marble.
Little waterfall.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what he was thinking, but eventually, you know, we'll, we'll look at roof and pitching and maybe this becomes the police department in twenty years and we move to a smaller office, or, you know, I know they tried to buy the library, the old library, but didn't work out, but, who knows? Nothing, nothing special there, uh, the big, the big general fund expenditures this year are the, the police department. Uh, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, huge jump, almost a hundred thousand more, but we're actually fully staffed, we have coverage. Uh, we are still paying police pension expenditures, as you will see, we've got Kathy, Pete, Kevin, is that right? So. We've got part-time wages, we have enough for a little bit of help on weekends, but we really don't need it, we're working on a different schedule so that, uh, Ethan and, um, Curtis rotate every other week, that we'll have coverage every day.
Most of the stuff out here is going down, most of it, I've seen other than the police.
That's really the big general fund, that's where our money's going, but in this town, I've noticed that people are very proud of their, having their own police department, you know? They don't want the county, they don't want the state, they want the local.
Sign of the times.
Yeah, so, I know we've had some problems there when I got here, you know, we had Neely or S Chief who just sat back there, read the paper all day. You had a one employ, a one officer who watched movies on Sundays and would ask for overtime, and I couldn't verify, cause I'm not here on Sundays. Um, to now, to three part-time, and we kind of landed four part-time at that time, now we've got no part-time, four full-time, and they're, they're doing a great job, uh, Curtis has still gotta learn a lot, but Michelle's better than what I've ever expected, you know? Um, Ethan's turned into a really fine officer.
I believe you got a part-time employee, especially like, but if you get, we get another job and another, they're gonna find a full-time employment somewhere else, they're just gonna leave.
Yeah, and that's what we were doing, we were training people, then watching them go, every time we thought we had one, they'd go to a bigger department. And, and some people, when they're young, they want, you know, they're gung-ho and want the excitement of being in the city and I wanna see.
They've always said St. Charles is just a stepping stone, especially for the younger people, yeah, it's just a stepping stone.
I don't, I mean, I don't blame people.
Of course, you know, then there's people like me and Pete who.
The life out there, I mean.
But, yeah, so the, the majority of.
But you can just get in.
Of the general fund is all police, and obviously, we're buying that new truck, and then it has to come outfitted, you know, the sirens lights, so that's another seven to nine thousand. Uh, so we're covered there.
Seriously, between the, the cost of a car versus the truck, was there really that much difference?
Twenty, uh, fifteen K.
Really?
This is, compared to that little hybrid, it was thirty-seven.
That, that enough the police car, and I'd just give him a Prius.
That's what the previous chief wanted, though. And it was approved, but. Uh, let's see, I guess, well, yeah, it's really police department heavy, um. We still donate to the beautification day, which sounds like it's gonna be May seventeenth, do you have any word on that, anybody confirm?
Nobody's talking about that yet.
I'll get a message from Doug pretty soon.
So, it's the fiftieth year, I think, this is kinda on the low, I don't know if he listens to these meetings, but they're gonna get him a park bench with his name on it, and kinda celebrate him a little bit for fifty years.
If I can help, I will, with my thing going on, I have a hard time even making it to the meetings anymore, so.
Uh, the refuse is just the MMWA, uh, parks, I do have forty K in capital outlay. I might drop that five K, I'm, I've asked for a quote, a few quotes on the planning commission capital outlay to rewrite some of the codes, I don't know what that's gonna be, but I'd probably only drop it about five K to thirty-five, which puts us right in the ballpark to pay for that fishing pier, so that could be another cool feature we add down, by the kayak launch, work on the kind of the circle, traffic circle, we've got a new steel swing, uh, Joe Crotch's swing going down there. So it could be a nice little area, we'll maybe take out some trees, add some, uh, picnic tables, more garbage, uh, receptacles, get the old play equipment up to the coal miners.
There's a lot of little things we could do to up, up the parks, and that one down there is probably, with that lumberjack, coal miners, wherever it is.
Lumberjack.
We need to clean the river out.
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, seriously, cause a lot of that just needs a little facework, it doesn't really have to be anything major, but a lot of the trees and nasty, so just some of that underbrush, just, just dirty and nasty looking, it's not a before, but. Like making that parking lot a little bigger, so you can put a truck and a trailer there for your boat.
Yeah.
Like Kathy, I was saying, just a little roundabout there, it's not a big deal.
Our goal is to use the mill from the, the road projects, when they come back to finish the roads, because you don't want any tar down there or asphalt, but the milling's a little different. So maybe we can get the milling down there and make an oval and a nice parking place.
I'm gonna talk about the drain thing too.
Up by Yankees?
You did it.
Yeah, that's gonna be replaced, I thought, when they come back, no?
Well, like, one thing was saying whether you're gonna have drains solved down through there, but I've talked about that before with you, we'll talk again, but I wanna put dirt back there, because I don't have a drain, Yankees got one and what's his face has got one, and I'm right in the middle, I'm the low spot, I could literally throw decoys out there in the springtime, it's just. Yeah, I, I put in for Eagle, so I'm just like, you know, you're probably gonna hear more on that one.
Okay, yeah, we, it needs to be done.
A hundred-year floodplain crap, so, yeah.
You can make float a weed in your hot tub.
No, I guess, yeah, I'm good, I'd be good with that, I got an extension cord, so I'm good.
So the parks, you might see the fishing pier, uh, add to that, um, we might need a few thousand from the DDA, but that's economic, you know, development and bringing people to the village.
I mean, you only go after, I don't know that much about it, I mean, I would really like to know how, how do you, how do you know what grants to go for and who to go for it through, and there's gotta be a lot of little ins and outs of that, I mean.
A lot, a lot of it's just emails, you sign up for email list, like, whether it's MDOT, whether it's DNR, whether it's Eagle, and so they come in and say, hey, we're accepting for this, or and so on, they're like, okay, do we qualify?
Well, like you're saying, you'll take, take it off this and put a little toward that, I mean, you don't think the state can't do that too, and say, hey, well, we need a little extra here, a little extra there?
Yeah, they, they probably do, I mean.
Just like the project from the, from the road thing, you know most of that money's gonna go to Saginaw or whatever, it's like, hey, we, we wanna guarantee that we're gonna get X amount of dollars for it, screw that.
Yeah. Where's the?
You were affiliated with the government, so you kinda know a little bit of our, there's just, be a little more ins and outs, but maybe one of us could even help and look, look up, I don't have the time, I used to, but I don't have it anymore.
I would, Michigan.gov and then just go through the website, that was my job, basically, to help people navigate state government and find out which department to go to, who to talk to. And obviously, because we were in the governor's office, we had our own liaison that most people didn't have access to, so that we could get information faster.
That was just through the state, that wasn't the fed, though, was it?
Correct, no, that is correct, it was just the state, if it went federal, we had good relationships with most congresspeople and they were, when we call and say, I'm from this office, they're, they're willing to help people, at least get them a response. Sometimes people are unhappy because they don't like the response, you know, but they got one.
We just keep putting at it, putting that hammer and at it till finally they just get sick of you and give you something sometimes, it's gotta be, it's.
Yeah, sometimes.
I mean, like you're saying, the grants, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice if we didn't have to pay for that parks and some of this other stupid stuff, but, I mean. I mean, like you're saying the grants, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice if we didn't have to pay for that parks and some of this other stupid stuff, but I mean. I just, like I said, I seen Grand Rapids when I went over there for that show, it was like, I look at saying, oh, flatty trample, right? Crapple and then you go over there, it's like, what the heck, it's just like all brand new, up to date, everything, I was like, how do these guys, everything's so updated and we get crap over here?
It's newer part of it, it's their, it's their, when we were, like, they were number two in the state. Or nu- number two in the nation for young employees to find work in economic freedom. Like this was maybe ten years ago, so all the college grads were going to Grand Rapids, when back in the day, they went to Saginaw, they went to Detroit. So they all moved there, the budget changed, that uh building, their inspector, their budget is one point three million dollars a year. To keep things looking nice, you know, ours was fifteen thousand.
Just, I'm trying to say, like, let's try to get on that mindset, that, that track to, to think, I guess, have you worked, you live, you play here.
It's kinda like Beaverton, how did they get, supposedly they're getting ten million from Eagle for their water system?
Oh, I haven't heard that.
I mean, this is just through on the pipeline, I've heard.
Was this from?
Uh this was just a headline I saw and so I don't know if it's, if it's true, it's from Out of Midland, that they said that Beaverton was gonna get ten million, what's that?
Is that for?
Is that for their water?
For house for the dam?
That's just for the dam, okay.
Yeah.
Install new water deposit, please replacement under, it could be this uh revolving fund too, so they're gonna have to pay that back.
Okay.
There's a lot going on with that DM stuff still.
Yeah, I think that's part of the reason why they probably jumped up his rates up and ways some. Eagle project. Doesn't say how. On that one, that's mid-mission now, but yeah, it's probably state revolving fund.
Gladwell's kind of a little to the east of that though.
Look, they got a, they got a whole cha- chain, but I mean.
For your Sanford.
Sanford, Wicksum, Seacord would be the highest one.
Exactly.
So the funding comes from the drinking water state revolving fund, clean water state revolving fund and federal ARPA.
Okay.
So it's all grants, but yeah, those are, you have to pay those back.
Okay.
And that's how they keep those funds open, and that's why when we go after them for the pump stations, we might get three point one million, but we're on the hook.
Well, don't do that pump station, seriously, doesn't that kinda? It just think you just like make it right, it, it just seems like we're always messing with that stupid pump station. It does.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you, let's do it right and whatever we gotta throw at it, just throw it at us, we ain't gotta mess with it. And, and just keep dumping a crap load of money to that thing, it just, it just seems to be a revolving door thing.
Fix it right, leave it for the night shift.
Right. Uh so that's the general fund, it's, it's not flashy, it's, it's not fancy like last year, but it allows everybody to do their jobs. Um keeps us afloat. Pays for our long-term liabilities, that's for sure. And then we go to ma- major streets, which is at fifty-one dollars, uh that number has been bumped. Uh to two thirty, two forty-nine. And that's just because the recreational marijuana revenue came in a little higher than normal, than they projected. I think they projected, I can't remember, but it's gonna end up being about a hundred and thirteen point six million dollars in recreational marijuana tax revenue. And six hundred million in income tax revenue. This allows us to fix drains, work on things like that, uh contracted services low. Uh capital outlay for small projects, water main leaks, breaks, um a little bit of patchwork. Little operating supply. Thirty-six thousand transferred to the local street so that we can continue to work on our own roads and let MDOT figure out theirs.
Yeah, how the heck are you gonna do that, what are you thinking about that? I was wondering about that, how do you, how do we do our own roads, how do we do our own milling, we rent a milling machine, these guys don't know how to run it?
No, we.
You know how to pay?
No, we, we just get quotes and go out and do it. So we did Spruce for like thirty-seven thousand, we did Fulton Hasmer for a hundred and.
But that was through Eric?
That's through us, like, we just get quotes from different people and.
Well, I'm just saying, if you, you were saying like, if you did something, they said they were coming in to do it.
Oh, there's still part.
Combined.
Yeah, well, so if we wanted to get a lower rate on asphalt, we could join on some of the projects.
Yeah.
Um which we've reached out before and they'll do like one project in our area every seven years. And so it's like, not a bad idea, idea in theory. But the prices we were getting from TJ Prees were just so low that it's like, let's just do it, we have the street fund, let's go. Uh but if wherever that fund gets low, then yeah, let's jump in and see what we can get out of them. Uh local street, uh top of page eight, the state share revenue act for locals. Ends up being about nine, ninety-five thousand five eighty instead of ninety-three, one ninety-nine. Drainage, we need a, yeah, a little bit of capital outlay, a little bit of equipment rental. All things that we have to submit to the state every year, they basically audit us unofficially. To make sure that we're doing what we're saying we're doing within these funds. Uh Marguerite has it figured out, I don't know if Jenny, you had it figured out, it's kind of a Marguerite thing, but.
The guys.
The guys report what equipment they use, when, how long, which for us, it's, for me, it's just a good way to see what we're using and what we need new. You know, like I said, we had a thirty-year dump, we had trucks with twenty-year tires on them, bald as bald gets. They weren't replacing equipment, they didn't have a, they had a equipment fund that was at zero balance. I'm like, what do you guys do, they just duct tape and Tito fixes it and hammers away, I'm like, that's not a great plan. Eventually Tito's gonna leave and we're gonna need those things, you know, I know we probably need to look at a backhoe. Um that fund has about eighty thousand dollars in it right now, undesigned needed. We still have money in the equipment fund, as you'll see, to pay off the dump. Uh we obviously got them a new truck, we paid for the loader straight up, uh the snow blade straight up, so we've replaced some of their stuff and obviously we know. Backhoe is important for what they do, um.
It's one of those wrong.
Old's the ones we got.
It's pretty old.
I think backhoe's my age.
Fifteen, ten, twenty, thirty, thirty-five. I gave you that one, I believe it.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll start looking at that for maybe next, next fiscal year. We got a Kubota, we kind of fix up, we got a John Deere, we kind of fix up, and then tell Terry Brown to, if he, we hire him again for mowing, just to slow down. Once, once that thing was kinda, we, we kinda messed with the seat, so he coast around, he started going slower. Less problems, less fixes, but if he slows down, okay, but those are things to think about, obviously not the price of a dump. You know, not the price of a backhoe or a loader, but keep it on, you know, the back of your mind that. You want them to do a good job, people see them, you don't want them having crappy equipment.
Is there any way we could like get, I wanna say volunteer, but you could pay some of these older guys that are just looking for something to do? Mowing lawns and where you could utilize some of the guys that know things to do other things, so.
That's what Terry Brown's doing, that's what we do.
Other people that would do, I mean.
Yeah, we have.
So we don't have the guys that can mow, we have to, we have to. I, I guess I don't understand that.
Oh, it's just a mow because they have better things to do or more important things to be doing, um.
It's just a summer thing, but.
Yeah, it's like summer help, that's what I did back in the day, I think I pay them ten bucks an hour.
That's how Jason started.
That's how Jason, yeah, there's a program, I'd like to get somebody younger.
Let's say you move some for some younger people for, for summer help, it's perfect, you know? They have nothing and maybe they're gonna do it, maybe get some experience doing that, doesn't have any college bound or anything, just some local, locals that. Keep up the streets, give them something to do.
Well, they look through the process.
They have to be careful, get a young one in there that just goes, kids are playing and. Well, you do.
Makes your heart stop.
It does.
That college kid that, was it college or just high school?
I think just high, uh, just high school or out, almost out of high school, I think.
That was killed in Chesapeake with a flash, two summers ago, driving his gator to go to his next, you know, parks job or whatever, sewer job, but. Those are things to consider, obviously there are some, you know, funds there that we can use, um we use a lot of it. Locals down to a hundred and four thousand dollars in that account, majors at about three sixteen, but. You know, we gotta pick and choose what we do and we have what, five point four one miles of major roads. MDOT tells us what we can do, that's fun. Uh top of ten is the Village Street Village, that's where we could double that number if we think it's gonna pass. Or we could leave it at two mills. I don't know how you wanna proceed.
Undesignated fund balance, one ninety-five, nine oh four for twenty-three, twenty-four, nothing for twenty-four, twenty.
So that's what we used for the category B of that fund. We used what we had in it and then the, the grants from the state was two fifty. And then we used some of our funds, cause it ended up being, we are doing more than five hundred thousand dollars in roads on that section.
It didn't still show like every year, I mean, every, it's, it's, obviously you can put in for a grant every year, correct? Can you?
Yeah.
I mean, so we get it one year, we can show them we need this in another spot, another year, can't you just keep rolling into that same?
Yep.
Fund to that, that same, yeah.
And that's what we did, we didn't get it this year, we were trying to combine the category.
From state, twenty-five, twenty-fifty thousand.
Yeah, so then it goes right to the county, cause that's where our bond is through. But we went for a category B again on the safe routes to school, we were trying to add an extra two hundred, uh extra five hundred thousand dollars on top of that originally. Uh for roads and we didn't get it, but doesn't mean we're not gonna go for it again, we're gonna keep going after it. But I, the rumor is around the state is they're cutting that grant, which is what they do, they do it for a while and they find something else like drinking water. What's more popular, what could, you know, create this job and give this person something to do and.
It's not a state election year, but it's a federal election year, so maybe dipping into the wrong path.
Yeah, maybe. We're still, we're still out for that million from congressional appropriations, I think they brought the, around the page. Rural Utility Service, Rural Waste and Water Disposal, Saint Charles Replacing Land Service Lines, one million dollars was requested out from Kildee. Um they s- they voted to keep it open in September, they haven't touched it since, but you've seen he's starting to announce. You know, five million for the arts in Midland and five million for the arts in Flint and. Uh some public safety grants and other things, so I just keep checking and watching and hoping and.
Midland seems to do well too, but.
Well, that's where, well, Mullenar's from, Dave Can, Shutey, I call it the Midland mafia. They're all well-connected and, and Kildee and Mullenar are great friends, so they take care of each other. Yeah, so we could increase that to one eighty, we could leave it at ninety, um. We have our two mills, we could take the two mills off of ours, but then when you put it back on, people are gonna complain. Or we could take, we could leave it at ninety and when, if it passes, we put it in a budget amendment in. September or August, August. Something to think about, we have, you know, three weeks before this is, before a vote. Top of eleven is the Boatworks Grant Fund, that is.
Can we not board on these independently, can we just board it as a general?
It's money, so it'll be.
All, all in one pool, you vote yes or no?
Yeah.
You're saying you're not, I'm saying, okay.
Oh, we, you know, right now, we'll do it all together. Boatworks, so that was something Chris Newman started, uh she just keeps that in case, it's kinda like a rainy day fund, just called the Boatworks Fund. Uh when we wanted to do projects or buy something, we kinda borrowed from there and just replaced it ourselves at zero interest loans.
So why are they calling it the Boatworks Fund, why is it called the rainy day fund like everybody else?
It started off with, I think, when they built the new Boatworks, that's where the fund money came out of.
Have we actually owned that HSC or is that beer line that owns the?
Uh some guy out of Troy owns it and leases it to HSC.
I see beer line in there all the time too.
Probably has something with HSC, I had someone to buy it when it was two point five during COVID, put a company in there and then that one. COVID happened and then they raised the price to three mil and the guy in Troy's like, I didn't know, I didn't think anybody wanna buy it. At least you're getting property taxes and out of it with HSC and I said, you're right, but you know, for us, that's, we need jobs there. We have kids that need jobs there.
That's that work play, yeah.
That's, that's the Everest, I've talked to Ed about this, talked to Mike, Kathy, this is, we need. Someplace, if you're not going trade school or if you are going trade school, you're not going military, you're not going to college, that you can stay here. Buy a home here, raise a family here and have a place to work. And I know Ed's looked, I know I've worked with Saginaw Future to try to get something there.
I thought I had somebody.
Yeah, it's tough.
I haven't heard anything in a while, so I'm like, eh, if I fall through.
A guy out of Corona who was looking, I had a guy out of Wausau who was looking, and then the guy in Corona just said it was too far from the interstate. And I was like, that sucks, but I get where you're coming from, so he went to uh Bridgeport, I think, but.
I mean, get off the track, we're talking about business, what's going on with the business, the guy was gonna make apartments or whatever, next to Tony up there.
I think he's finishing up his latest project, I don't know if it was Beaverton or Wicksum, he bought a place up there and just flipped them that.
Is that all for three of them spaces, the lots there that?
He, he flipped that, that house.
You don't remember, but there was uh, the, the bar was there, just be the Red Lantern, then he had Dick Brown's Auto and then Party Store was it? The next one?
Tito had a restaurant, right?
Coffee shop.
Yeah, so he's, it's still in the works, it's still planned.
It's going basically between Tony's and the, and the library?
Yep, he's.
The whole thing.
He's still moving.
What about the?
I've heard that, uh one of, like, the insurance company is out, but I heard that the Harris Salon is still in and wants to be there. What about?
What about the golf course, I, I have people, I, people asking me, what do you know about that, I don't know.
I don't know anything.
He wants to open up.
The restaurant, but they don't want him opening up the restaurant without the golf course.
So I know nothing about.
Well, I, I would just assume that because the use changed from golf and conference to agriculture. That he'd have to produce.
It's a business, you just said you want businesses in here.
It's not.
We actually was doing good and that was fully.
It's not in the village, so.
Parking lots in the village and the rest is a township.
The rest is the township, so that's a, that's a Don Ak, that's a Don Ackerman question.
Well, how much of that is in the, are the golf, none of the golf courses in the, in the village?
Okay, only part of the parking lot is in the village.
Parking lot, that's it.
Oh, I didn't know, so there's the ru- the, the actual building, is that in the village village?
No.
Township.
Really?
So, so all those houses are in villages, just outside, that's township right there.
That clears the things up.
Yeah, cause I liked it.
We're here and it was all on you, 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 you guys do now, this, swear to God, I just heard this. Two weeks ago and I almost rang it up in the council meeting, but I didn't know enough about it. They said that he wanted to open up that, that building for restaurant again and you guys wouldn't let him because they said, nope. If he doesn't open up the golf course, he's not opening up the restaurant. Did you hear the same thing?
Yeah, he wanted to start a farm and.
Want in camping and then do real estate and, you know.
He did the same thing in Maryland.
Now he wants to open up a banquet center.
I, I think that's.
Yeah, no, but we won't let him, I'm like, wait a minute, like, I know.
Same thing, the, the village of Saint Charles, not township, nothing, nothing, and I'm not exactly know where the boundary lines are, I know it's that way somewhere.
Right.
But I'm, and just like, cause I heard about the, the cow farm thing, putting up fences and marijuana growing out there, it's always, really? You know, I didn't know.
Next time somebody asks you, tell them it's not the village, it's just a township. Yeah, that's good to know that, like, I'm like, this just does not sound like.
Well, growing up here, we always thought that was part of the village.
Yeah, the back parking lot is.
Those parcels like in the front, so like all the houses along there, like my parents and all that, it's.
They're all village, yeah.
It's like where Henry lives?
Yep, that's all, that's, so he's in the village, but just right in his backyard, that's township.
So the green.
I knew it was right there, but.
So the green boundary line.
Anyone say, okay, do this if you're not gonna do that.
Where's Walma?
Right here.
Well.
Walma right here.
I'm gonna keep my mouth shut, on that, on those, on those people.
Village, this is all village, this is all village, this is village, 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 and then that's all township and it, if you zoom in, you'll see that.
Which the greens.
The problem is, everything else he did, he does great, he makes money, hand over fist sort of thing, he did not know. The problem is, everything else he did, he does great, he makes money, hand over fist sort of thing, he did not know how to run a golf course and he did not experience the rest.
That's a rumor that's been going on, I've heard from more than just one verse or a few years.
Yeah, it was because they had something good, he actually started improving the golf course, making it nice. Building was nice, but then he had his wife run it and then she, you know, the family, let the family run it, they don't know what the hell they're doing. You know.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Yeah, he was gonna buy that, he was trying to get penny in on that. Don Ackerman.
Okay, alright.
He has to turn his head around. But yeah, that's, it's a very, that's.
That's good to know.
Yeah, I was like, ah, I didn't.
When I was growing up, that was always part of the village, I, and I just assumed it was, it was the village, I just didn't know no difference, right on the boundary.
Was it ever the village though? No.
Half that park line, he just showed you, so he's.
I know, but you just said that's the golf course.
No, well, it's, well, even the golf, when you went there to golf. Anybody that was.
Farm, like it is now, if you look at it now, it's a.
All managed, whatever, they always went up there from, from the high school.
Just like Maple Hill.
Part, that was part of the community. True.
Township and I guess Saint Charles Township, wow. Alright.
Yep, so Boatworks is, I think, that's, so we borrowed money for the water. Project on Fulton and Hosmer, we borrowed money for the dump and we're just paying it back, we have two more years, two more years, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, we're paying back both of those and we're done, and we can go start looking at other stuff. We're in a good financial spot to, in, in a good time to, okay, you did this, what's next, what's our goals, where do we wanna go? And we're, we're kinda, that's where you gotta come together and.
Well, that's what people wanna hear, they wanna see here, okay, that's what we're doing with our money, that's.
Yep, is it phase two, do we go right into phase two, do we go and do, okay, let's go into phase two and buy, there's a pump station. Phase two and buy a backhoe, I mean, there's.
Yeah, I think it was very clear.
We are solving.
Like, when I come in tonight, I ask you, okay, mom come up to me today and went, I got this, this and this, why is it going up, what is it, I'm like. Not sure, three different buildings, it was like piddly stuff, dollar fifty-one, two eighty, whatever, whatever, like, what the, I don't know, it was from one, like, I'm like.
That's the Benton Street grain.
And you're saying it's from three different drain projects?
The, uh, Benton Street, Le- Little.
I think it should have been a little clearer on the, on the, what they center, so she knew exactly what it was. Sure, they had a map like on the back, but.
Oh, I don't know, far as I know, right here, so Lidle, Eaton Grain and Benton Grain, so the village total is three thousand forty-nine dollars and sixteen. Preliminary costs, I see that. So please keep this in mind that this is a list, is an estimate as of February twenty twenty-four, and additional assessments may rise throughout the year.
Yeah, you don't have the map on there, it wasn't a map on one of them on the back.
Alright, DDA, so that's kind of their capture taxes, uh, TIF money, tax increment financing. Uh, the Goodrich Building is completely full, has been, it's been one of the hard things that we wanted to do, uh. When they, when the DDA bought that twenty-one, twenty years ago, they weren't shared work, that Secretary of State has been tremendous. Um, I would like to vote on resolution here to help, uh, Thurston's out with his new gun laws. And I'm thinking if the gun laws and you have the DMV, we can knock out everything and keep people here, so, uh, I'd like to vote on that tonight and. I, I told Travis, I was like, anything to keep Neil happy, you know how that is, but, um, I think that we should do that. Uh, so DDA has money, we're gonna, again, facade grants, we already have two re- two requests in already. Uh, for this year to fix up buildings, the Masonic Lodge wants to fix up their facade. I'm gonna reach out to Tony and ask to help them with their facade, we have money for the old ti- uh, old fashioned Christmas parade, we have money for the Easter egg. Uh, they have money in the, the bank, um, we tried to spend a lot of it last year because the state, if you don't spend it, comes in and takes it. So that's why we did the water tower.
I was gonna say, they got much more money in there left to spend?
Three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So that's why I don't mind the fishing pier, but it has to be, there's, there's rules to how you can use it. It has to be for certain things within the certain district, because even the safe routes to school, I'm like, oh, let's update the lighting as part of it with DDA. Outside the DDA, but we can do lighting, we can look at downtown stuff.
Can we look at sidewalks downtown?
That was like two hundred, three hundred thousand and wipe them out, but we can definitely look at upgrading that, if the money keeps coming in. Maybe we do that next year.
To see some like solar lights, like, you know, I think it's nice at Christmas time and wintertime. Where you have nice white lights and there's so many nice solar lights now that you can put in trees or, you know, just for.
One of the goals is, so I don't know if you've been to Bay City or, or up north, the lights across the town, so I wanna do that. I've got a quote to do that, we have the money to do that, but I'm waiting on Frost to finish his size so that we can connect. Right now, the only ones we could go, we could go Tony's to the museum and then it kinda would go down unless we added posts. And there's not a ton of electrical down there, so that's gonna cost some money, it's behind the electrical sign, but it's very weak, uh, Pat Cornburn and I walked this. Two or three times last year cuz I was like, let's get this, I want it, it looks so cool, imagine it during old fashioned Christmas. Um, so that's, uh, we, we're in the works, I, you know.
All of the bushes up behind that side, is that the village? At Tony's?
Yeah, I, well, let me look, I, I'll confirm, I think our ownership runs, runs out.
It looks pretty shaggy.
I just don't notice Midland, we went to eat there, you know, they still had their, their nice lights on their poles, you know, and just was. Winter, you know, a winter.
Yeah. D L L property, LLC, so we don't even own it. Uh, the other thing DDA I kinda wanna look into and I'll talk to them next week is, the Goodrich Building inside is pretty old. The carpet, wallpaper, holeies, so I'd like to get that fixed up, get some quotes on that. You know, you, you know, the state is proud of what they do here, other businesses, Arnold Chiropractic does a lot and, you know, they built the new facility in. Freeland.
Yeah.
And they were worried that because we were so dingy looking that they'd lose customers, well, that's why I wanted to add that.
Yeah.
The alley behind because their employees complained about the roads and we got them the third salon so they could do massages and. We updated their carpet, the DDA, again, DDA did to make it look nicer and hardwood floors and. Uh, cuz they were, we were competing with Freeland and, you know, we kept them, they're still paying, they brought people in and.
Freeland was booming, the, the businesses came up, the people poured in there and, and that whole community is booming.
They're still building houses.
Taxes went up, everyone's booming over that way, but they got down on their outskirts, but yeah.
So, DDA, more of the same, um, couple of things that I've, I'm gonna try for like a, what is it, a drone light show at Christmas.
Oh, yeah.
Instead of fireworks, I think that'd be cool, I want the downtown lights. Uh, you know, fix up the facade, that'd be, if we can get everybody, that'd be, almost everybody downtown's facade would be done. Um, obviously the post office, everyone, that would be a little bit of work. But, I mean, it's, it's been about sixty thousand a year we've been putting in downtown to try to spruce it up.
One-time dealers talking?
Uh, uh, per year, for the last three years, yeah, we've been pumping money that, and then the paint, that water tower was like one twenty something. Hundred and twenty thousand.
And you did it though.
It did, it did, but it looks so much better. So DDA again, not necessarily your overseeing it, but it definitely helps town.
We could do something else to that water, I don't think, sure, a couple of people have actually heard it before, they were gonna make an observatory out of that.
Oh, yeah.
To do somewhere, you could bring some people from in, from.
Bird watching or something, Audubon Society.
Down bird watching, but, I mean, you could literally look almost to Saginaw from out there, I know.
I didn't make it high enough.
Is that high enough?
I did, I tried to get up there.
Oh, really?
I stopped.
I've been up there.
I was, I was all gung ho, but it's me and this other guy, it was small corners, it was really.
That was the thing back when I was in high school fifteen years ago.
Oh, yeah.
So, top of page thirteen is the sewer charges in, obviously we raised rates, I think. Um, the next time we look at rates, we can back off on the sewer side, that fund is doing very well. It's what we wanted to happen with the water fund, but the water fund hasn't kept up because of the projects we've done. And you can only attribute, again, these are enterprise funds, they could only be used for what they're supposed to, so. Water has to stay with water, sewer has to stay with sewer, um, so the sewer fund's like. Like eight hundred thousand in the bank and the water fund's like a hundred and something, so the water is not keeping up with the work the sewer is, but. We do have sewer projects that need to be done, so we will have money to put towards a grant or match towards the revolving fund. Um, so we can back off the sewer side and, and, um, stick looking with, uh, the water side. So nothing fancy here other than just saving for the revolving fund, cuz we want the, if we're gonna do the pump stations, let's do the one point two on pump three and, and get it done. So they don't have to do all the, you know, maintenance that they do and deal, like Paul said, mess with it all the time. Seems like we're always messing with it, or fixing this, or it's gotta fix that, so. It gives us some money for repairs and maintenance. Just need to.
What is O, O P, O P E B, who's that?
Other post-employment benefits, so we do have some, now with Tito going, we do have some. OPEB liabilities that we have to pay and the auditor wants to see the, the money where the liability lies, so. Much the same for the water fund, the only difference is the water fund, we have to start paying back. Our bond through the county, so there's three hundred thousand in capital outlay there. Um, I think we owe two hundred and sixty-one thousand, I, I gave you the sheet, I think it's two hundred and sixty-one, yep. Two sixty-one, eight fifty next year, two sixty-three after that, so that's one of those where. We really gotta watch what we're doing in the water fund. That's about twenty thousand dollars in there. Inner loan payment in the water fund to Boatworks, that was for the water main fixes on Fulton and Hosmer. Put this off of fifty-two. Repairs and maintenance, we, another thing I really wanna start doing is the, uh. Next page on page, uh, sixteen, the, the water meters, we're gonna start really make a conservative effort to replace these outdated water meters.
Why don't we rent hydrants?
How would we?
Hydrant rental.
Yeah.
Why don't we rent them? Give them back when we're done using them?
That's a great question, that could be an error, I'd have to look, um, I have thought about renting them, every time the fire department uses them. You could, not necessarily charge them for the water per se, but you could charge them for the rental, there's, there's villages and cities that charge them twenty-five hundred dollars a tab.
Not charging for the, for the coffee, charging for the.
Um, let me look at that real quick, it could just be a typo or I've got something.
To the village, it's an expense, under other village property, so it's just going from the water fund to the general fund.
Robbing Peter the people? I had to look. I had to look, didn't even know. Cuz I, there was, when I first got here, there was a lot of inner workings of funds that I didn't understand and why they would do it that way and. I was told we've always done it that way and so I stopped doing it that way and got yelled at, but I think in the long run, it's, it's probably better off. What was the one that I really, I thought, was it, uh, not computer rent, was it computer rental?
Computer rental and building rental.
Building rental, alright, what are we buil- what are we renting and what, who's coming in to use our computers? No, that's just how we move things, I'm like, nah, like I, I, there's only so many limits to the hiding we can do.
There's a way to get it out of the sewer and, uh.
Yeah, but maybe we.
Sewer and water fund in the, uh, DDA.
Maybe when you go back. Equipment fund is fun, um, for equipment, uh, through other channels, whether it's general fund, sewer water, you can only. Do a per- certain percentage allowed by the state, uh, this is just a way to build it back, obviously pay for our debts. As you see, the, we gotta pay the dump truck, thirty-one thousand. We have ten thousand repairs and maintenance, twenty-nine thousand and things that we can fix or, uh, look at purchasing or put towards a purchase, so. Eventually, I'd like to get to a point where that number is consistently and kinda the same every year, uh, obviously we're making up for. Old, old things that we didn't purchase, so it's kinda fluctuated, but I'd like to get to a point where whoever's the superintendent knows, okay, there's gonna be. X, Y and Z this year, next year, this year, next year, so that's not. Even, depends on who the manager, who the superintendent is, how they wanna do it, I know some people, you know, they think like the federal government, if I don't spend all this money. It won't be there next year, I've never operated that way, I've never worked for legislators or governors who work that way, it's. Let's do what we can do now and you don't have to do the same thing every year, we can, some years you're gonna be high, some years you're gonna be low. Let's underspend the budget and see where we can reallocate those funds, so. It's a personal preference, but I'd like to get to a point where it's a minimum number and in big years we can go up. Because there's a fund balance or, you know, if we don't have to do as much, we back off and keep it where we need it. Ends up being, what, three point two million, which, uh, I sent, gave you a paper kind of on the requested budget, it's about, it's about two hundred thousand dollars less than last year, but. We did a lot more last year as far as the phase one. Puts quite a bit of money towards our, our OPEB and our liabilities, I said I wanted to slowly back off of those, we got up to seventy-four percent. Twenty-nine percent, we're gonna take another year where we're digging at that to try to get closer to seventy-seven and thirty-five and then. After that, let's just make our payments cuz we're in a good spot. And I think what they did with pension funds, they're going to do with the OPEB funds, that is the rumor and the finance committee. That they are gonna, people seem to like it, municipalities seem to vote for you when you give them grants for three million, whatever. So, uh, I think we'll watch that, but like I mentioned, I can, I kinda put it in there, I think, I, in the note. Like as far as OPEB, I mentioned it earlier, um. Our active employees account for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our liabilities, so that's everybody post twenty sixteen. So that's probably easily thirty people, you know, whereas everybody before that accounts for eight hundred and two thousand. That we're still all for pre-two thousand sixteen. So we've made the changes, but we're still paying off the debts. And I threw that in the budget letter and I think I might have thrown in the handle, but if not, it's in our OPEB actuary that you guys will receive. Probably in April, we'll have both murders in OPEB. If there's anything you wanna see changed, moved, these are the preliminary revenues that we can expend. Based on the state, hoping for more federal, in the letter, I, I talk about, you know, because of what we owe for the water project, we gotta keep going after grants and I think. Uh, Safe Routes is nine hundred thousand, Congressional Appropriation a million and that Technical, Managerial and Financial is five hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So we could see a bump in our budget. We've had an announcement by summer for at least the TMF grant. Safe Routes, I think they're gonna wait till twenty twenty-five to announce and I think, uh. Shovels in the ground would be fall of twenty twenty-six. So, I just want, like, I get excited, I wanna hear, like, we won, uh, it means a lot, it's great to, you know, partner with people and. The way that Eric Construction worked on that project and how efficiently and, knock on wood, few problems, we need more of that. Again, I, we're trying to do, I know you guys are trying to make this a better place to work, live and play and so am I and. Done a lot, but I think there was a few years where we just kinda sat on things and, I, I know somebody. Who's no longer in the profession, um, ended up going to another municipality and got ran out. Because of their all talk, no action, so, I think he did a lot of that here.
When you talk about business, I mean, you say, think about it, if you're gonna put a business in this town, where would you put it? Where could you put it, you gotta have room to put a business in.
Right, I think if, if Mr. Frost does what he says, that'll be, you know, eight, seven hundred, nine hundred thousand going up with apartments and then. That whole storefront on the bottom will be, I think he's gonna make one, two, maybe four business, new businesses.
Really around then, but remember the old Rebel gas station, that little lot right there.
I think Julie's.
Why isn't somebody put a business, I heard Taco Bell.
Julie Church owns it.
Our, our previous chief owns that property, she got it off the land bank for like. I wanna say.
But I'm, I'm hearing all sorts of shit, DQ and the, the soil was contaminated.
Yeah, they were just saying, it seems like they do core samples, something to go and test it, you know.
So, we had a, I mean, that was part of what Saw Grant, four hundred thousand dollars to test the tank, to take, take out the water, or the gas tanks here. Four hundred K.
Believe it.
We got a grant for it, but.
We never got the money for it.
Yeah.
Because, uh, AC or AKT Peerless never, um, Matt never went after him to get it.
Submitted.
I've never got that.
We never got the grant, why?
We never got the money from the state for that.
I mean, to get rid of that contamination, well, that's just big bucks.
But, right, remember, uh, did they make Thurstons in it?
Thurstons, yeah, they didn't.
Paid for it, so.
Paperwork or whatever, and.
Yeah, cause Barrett didn't have it back in.
Could you go to them? And then Dennis came in, and Dennis was like, can you call this guy, and I called the guy's phone number, and he called back right away and they started working on it.
I've received one phone call about a, a new fast food restaurant, but nothing that's found anywhere, and it was a Taco Bell.
Seriously, you, you really sit down and think about it, if you wanna bring all your businesses into this town, or even to that end of the town, or that end of the town. Where, where would you put it?
Yeah, there's a spot, it's for sale now.
You gotta have an idea before you can actually.
Yeah, they, they wanted, I had people that wanted it for car wash, and the lady wasn't ready to sell, and then, I don't know what happened, she put it up for sale, that section. Her husband passed.
Were you talking about?
The block, Semat Company, Menex.
Oh, yeah.
And then there's another spot with that wooded area.
Isn't there something in?
What about that little lot, just, uh, just, uh, right on the edge of the north branch of the bed, right there at the bridge and beyond the east side of the road?
From the Shonix?
Used to be a, I think it was a car dealership, a long time ago.
That is a wa- that's a water.
I think that's.
That's a, that's high water, high floor plain area.
That's where all the oil is buried.
The what?
Didn't, what did that used to be, car shop?
Nah, it was, it was a dealership.
There's a dealership, yeah.
The dealership, Shonix.
Yeah.
I was told to never purchase that.
Really?
Hmm.
Just a heads up.
I just thought it was a used car lot a long time ago.
That's why it never gets.
It was a car lot from the Shonix.
Part of it's the flood.
Well, I heard word has it that Dow used to bring their, uh, stuff and dump it here in St. Charles.
Really?
Yeah.
How can they dump oil in there like that?
Buried and dumped.
Okay, how could they do that, just in tanks then, or something must be?
Probably.
Boy, I've been in St. Charles all my life, I don't remember that ever happening, you know, and I'm old.
What, what's that you're talking about?
Um, Hart just said that where that, that spot you were just talking about, that there's tanks, there are oil tanks buried in there.
Well, I don't doubt that, like I said, if it was a used car lot or something, I could see that happening.
Yeah.
Or dump.
I don't remember that ever happening.
How do you verify that though?
Right. You, you pay the four hundred K to.
Exactly, to go get tested.
After you purchase it, to get it tested, and then have Eagle come in.
You have to do some background checking before you ever purchase it, that's for sure, so, yeah.
Hmm, that's the first time we've ever heard of that.
We're gonna have to clear that spot, we could probably do something downtown on that.
What about where you're, where the old.
West Bell.
Dump. Observatory right there, I mean, where they put the gazebo on there, like, pretty dead area.
Be a nice spot for something.
Well, I'm telling you, if you could build it up, maybe I don't care.
That's DNR though.
I'm just going up, putting it out there, I mean, you could do a little, some kinda little strip mall or something, that's something to bring people into this town. I mean, with the, with the stuff like the water tower and you're talking, a little parades and that, yeah, it's okay, but.
Yeah, you could. What about the public parking next to Thurston, so you could put something there, put something out the back for sleds to get up and down.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Good thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll see some change this year, not as much as we want.
Could have snow first for the sleds.
I don't know.
Be nice when you get some river cleaned up.
Want, yeah.
We do need that.
Yeah.
I was out at Ringwood, we was walking a couple weeks ago, and I was just thinking, like, how nice it would be to kayak from Ringwood into St. Charles back and forth, you know?
Back in the day, they got grants, he might know, and I don't, Kathy knows, remember Dale Greaves?
Dale Greaves.
They had a barge that went down, back.
Yes, you're right.
There's a whole.
Dragged my father clean up, and I heard the DNR shut him down, said, nope, we want El Natural.
Yep.
Really?
Yeah.
You're right.
Mm-hmm.
That barge went away, and his job went away, all the kids that did that in the summer, they all went away. Used to like call him up with the barge with a, boom, boom, tie him, there's cable him to a tree on the shore.
It's so shallow right there.
There's some bad spots, it's like the train bridge thing, you know, that's why I've been bitching about that, with the, with the DNR, cause you can't put in it, the DNR, a lot of crap gets built up there.
Think they never dredged that?
Yeah.
You know what that costs, it'd be, it'd be a lot cheaper to just put a, a boat launch in on the other side, where I was telling you, versus thinking about them and dredging all that, I mean. Seriously, put a little stone in, drag it a little bit, put a boat, a boat launch in, or you're gonna pay hundreds of thousands, not millions of dollars to do your tests and the soil samples and the dredge out, it, it'd take forever. Millions of dollars.
Don't you think the DNR would want?
Yes, yeah, I, you'd think so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand that.
It's a state, the waterways, yeah, I don't get it, they, they should be responsible for keeping the waterways open for the public, and they're supposed to do that.
But I understand the nature of it, the nature thing, part of it, but still, you. I, you know.
We have a thing where we, we're all gonna go down there and pull that crap out, or whatever happened to that, I don't think anybody did, or they didn't plug back up.
What are they gonna do if you do it?
Right.
Alcohol induced behavior.
Like this here, like this side of the village, downtown, that's, you know, Matt, that used to be all open wide and everything.
Like, I understand back in the day, or, and you guys, they put, they, they, they wanted to, to drift that and duck on, or, what does? They went through the, the chainsaw, cleared the path all the way through there. Anybody say anything? No. Give me something to do, I got a chainsaw.
He used to do it till he, till he stopped.
Yeah, so it's barely broke up, you used to dump all this horse shit in there too.
Play for some more grants, see if it's cleared.
That doesn't surprise me.
Yeah, but you really, for like what he's saying, from Ringwood here, you got no authority over that, we have no authority over that, so.
No, I'd like.
I'm just. These towns so much.
Oh, yeah.
I caught him throwing, uh, forty gallon trash bags in McDonald's dumpster when, when I was the one cleaning the parking lot in high school. I said, hey, fat man, what are you doing? Mind your business, he says, yeah.
Everybody loved it, man.
I went and told the boss, I got him in trouble.
Drive?
We should probably set the truth in taxation in.
Uh, yes, yeah.
What is that, the thirteenth, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah. We should set the truth in taxation meeting for the next council meeting, which allows us to vote on the budget and lets the public know, that's our intent, and. Follow state laws and regulations, I think you have to, you're supposed to at least give six days and ask eleven font.
Yeah, it's gonna be posted in the tri-county citizen by the end of February, so it gives them at least two weeks to know that it's coming, because it's the tri-county, cause everybody gets it for free. Not everybody has access to the internet, I questioned that like twenty times.
Put it on our door, put it.
On the website and.
We need a motion for that, make a motion, set the truth taxation, uh, meeting for our March village council meeting.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
The only other thing, I gave you guys a resolution, this is the help Thurston Outdoors, it's a resolution to support. Uh, we'll begin on March first, she'll be a notary at that time, so that anybody, because they changed the way, all, instead of firearms, they changed pistol to firearms, so every gun needs. A state background check and a federal background check.
Boy, the twenty-six inches are longer, is that what it was?
So they are worried about sending people to the city to get the background check.
Yeah.
Um, that they wouldn't come back and buy their guns here, so in order to keep business here, I thought this is a great resolution, Chief Oliver has id- has done it before, he has experience with the, my system, I, I love the. What is it, Michigan State Police, my pistol program, so, it's a good way to keep business here, help the Thurstons and keep the DMV or the SOS, you know, doing their work. Cause we gotta keep what we have if we're gonna be looking for more.
Looking for more.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept resolution twenty-four dash three.
Also for it.
So, roll call.
Roll call, hold.
Jamie Kendall absent, Darcy McSwain?
Yes.
Paul Jenderski?
Yes.
Edgar Tirov?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. See you in a few weeks, go over this again.
Heard any more about the parking lot over there?
Let's just have a meeting once a week, I need a kick in my income. Fifty dollar, cha-ching!
Motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
I am not.
Meeting adjourned.
Great work, Hart.